Heidi, was there anybody making? Okay. Public comments on specific personnel or student matters are not an appropriate subject for presentation to the school board, and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Any comments that may violate the rights of an employee or student will not be permitted. Speakers are not immune from legal consequences regarding the content of said speech. Due to public notice requirements, board members will not discuss issues presented through audience participation. All right.
I just had one, Jewel figured, I just had one thing. Before the meeting, I had checked the agenda and wanted to look at the link for the strategic plan information, and I had to get permission and use the Google address. But I got a message that it was mistakenly put in as not shareable. So then I went back to the agenda to click on the link again, and the three docs had been deleted. And I could not access them. I would suggest that, you know, going forward for all the agendas, that you can check all the links and, you know, make sure that everything.
Just out of curiosity, what time were you doing that?
I think it was around 11:00 in the morning, something.
Okay.
I mean, I didn't check specifically, but it was in the morning, later morning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I know I printed them off this afternoon.
So I will say that, you know, Google has made some changes to their sharing. This is always fun. So the folder was not shared publicly, and I did do that. Jewel emailed me, and I was like, I'm so sorry. But then I realized just before the meeting that even though the folder was public, the docs have not been, like the three docs. So I apologize profusely. I did make them public, so they are all, but they've been there the whole time.
Okay.
But yeah. So sharing the folder publicly does not share the docs publicly. And I apologize for that. That was not the intent. They're there, and we're gonna actually go through them on this thing together tonight, so.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Hi.
Thanks, Heidi, for calling me a line here. Hi, Sherry.
Hi. So I had the privilege today to take six students with me to the Fourth Annual Northern Wisconsin Sportsmanship Summit. And while we were there, I attended a session for supervisors that were there. And they just recommended that I let you know about a deal from the WIA. It is about hear it, see it, report it. It's about sportsmanship. Things that a person can if they attend a game or an event, and they see any kind of unsportsmanlike conduct, that they can use a QR code, and then they can fill out this form. The form that they will fill out does ask them for their name, so that will be made known. But then that is then emailed to us.
Who's us?
And I'm, from what I'm understanding, is that Dwayne, Dwayne Gasparini would be the one getting it as our athletic director. And then it would have to be called attention to our school that we had received this. And basically, what they just wanted to do, know, or wanted us to tell you is that be prepared. I'm hoping we don't ever get one, but be prepared that you need to figure out what you're going to do if you get one. So I just don't want you to be blindsided that, hey, this could happen. I'm hoping not, really am. But that if you get it, it's called a game day misconduct report. So. That's what I'm here for.
Thanks for that information. I think that's something that we need to make sure that we have some other process put together so that if we do get one. And it has happened before, so it's not, I mean, not through that particular
Method, right.
Right, but it has, and so I think that it's good for us to make sure that we have.
I wonder, I'll follow.
And it might be in the athletic boards right now. But we'll, we'll look into it, make sure that we have a process ready for that.
Can I ask a question? So does that, is that referring to the athletes?
It could be athletes, it could be someone in the crowd.
Okay.
It could be someone in your parking lot.
Coaches?
Coaches.
Anything during the game.
During, during that event.
Game day misconduct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, during that event. Um, it has to do with a range of all kinds of things.
Sherry, can you share that with us?
I will just give this to you.
I, I have it.
Yeah.
Okay, you wanna just send it to us?
Yeah, it's all kinds of things. The, the thing we did say that we wish it also had, because this is negative. It would also be nice if they had a way to compliment somebody, you know, but I don't know if the WI is gonna go there yet. But in case, you know, but maybe we could put our own QR code and just say, hey, you know, I'm seeing this positive thing happen. But yeah. That's what it kinda looks like.
Thanks for the info.
Alright, thank you.
Any more, Heidi? Are there any adjustments to the agenda? If not, would like a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Any.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, we're going on to the spotlight.
Thanks for being here.
Very good.
I don't know.
I don't know, I looked at you so hard, it kinda made me scared when I was looking through it. I was hoping I'd be able to knock.
We had to come up with like the answers to those questions.
I want you to have a review of that.
I'm Janet Jensen, High School Mathematics.
I'm Kat from Kressman, and I teach elementary math. And so as our, kind of came up with our department vision, we've been kinda working with this for a while. All students will be able to think critically, practice problem solving, visualize concepts, build and retain a set of content, and build college and career readiness. I was just saying, like, this is like really the foundation, and I feel like as we're getting, when people are like, oh, math is taught really differently these days, this is sort of like the foundation of like where we're basing a lot of our decisions from. And I think that like as I was thinking about this too, like when we, we're talking about like thinking critically and understanding concepts, like all of the research shows that all students should have access to that, and like understanding concepts in a deep way is not just for like certain learners, but for all learners. And then this idea of like visualizing concepts has also been coming up a lot, and it's a strong part of our curriculum. And there's a lot of research, and like a lot of the mathematicians these days are talking about, or math educators are talking about how math is a creative topic, and that like the brain research shows that like when adults and children are doing math, there's like a wide network of connections being made across your brain, including the areas that are very visual spatial. And so I think it allows all of our students to access our content, along with like kinda keeping up with the brain research. So with that foundation, we went about trying to choose our new mathematics curriculum a couple years ago. And we adopted elementary mathematics, K through 11, so all of our, everything it has developed curriculum for K through 11. There's so many different options, 11th through 12th grades, first college. So we have all those classes as well, but elementary mathematics really fits that vision. So that's fine.
How long have you used it?
This is our second year or third year. It's our third year. At the, like, yeah. Third year. We definitely, you know, from elementary all the way to middle school and high school. So the, the lessons at the elementary and the middle school, high school are the similar, similar structure. So there's a warm-up that is to activate student knowledge and background knowledge, and then there's a group problem solving component. And then the summarization or synthesis as a class of the concept. And then there's individual practice and cooldown. So kind of a pretty different model than a lot of mathematics classes were when I was growing up, for sure. But really like the student thinking and student knowledge and is really at like the forefront of this curriculum, and with our aim to be the forefront of all of our mathematics classrooms. Okay, so we're gonna give you, show you an example of a warm-up from the elementary side, and then from upper levels. So this one is which one doesn't belong. So this is the slide, the next slide is the slide that would be presented. This is from a fifth grade classroom. And so the prompt is just which one doesn't belong, very open-ended. And the students, there's no right answer to it. And so students, you can imagine, I don't know, do we need group participation?
I was having trouble with that, I gotta tell you. I don't know.
It's really interesting, though, from my observations, like a lot of different students chime in. Like it is not a certain section of them because it is so open-ended, and like you can imagine that a student may say, A doesn't belong, because it's not, and they, like, even if they're not using the technical language, like if they just said, it's not a regular sheet or something like that, that's where you can use what the student is thinking and explaining, and then the teacher can add in other like academic language, and add in equations to match, or if they're like, well, what is the volume of A, you know? And so you can talk about calculating the volume of any of the prisms, even if they're not regular shapes or don't follow a general formula. And usually, I mean, I'm surprised that all of these are the same color. Usually, one of them is a different color. And so that's always like, just to even engage the most reticent, like, I don't wanna say anything. Well, that one's green, you know, okay, good, like, we can at least, at least we're starting the conversation somewhere.
Interesting.
This is sort of a little redundant from what we've already said, but just the students are at the forefront of the thinking, and you can see by activating their background knowledge and getting them engaged from the beginning, sort of sets the precedent for the classroom. And so, yeah, so this kind of gets their brains going, and then after this, we probably stand up and do a whiteboard activity so that students can really play with this mathematical concept and work through it as a group. And then the teacher would come back and take that activity and summarize, okay, so what were we supposed to learn today? And really make sure we had all this kind of organized chaos going on, and hopefully everyone's thinking out there and engaging, and then coming back and really solidifying what were we supposed to learn today? And then, of course, practice. Have that form. Typical component of mathematics, so like a old style mathematics. Okay, so this is an example from Algebra II, high school. What do you notice? What do you wonder? This is a very common question throughout, is what do you notice, what do you wonder at the elementary school all the way to high school? So, what do you notice? Oh, the whole thing's not showing up on the screen. Go, yeah, there you go, thank you. Okay. So, what do you notice? What do you wonder? And the really cool thing about this, this goes all the way back to elementary school. They, like, oh wait, I've seen these blocks before. I've held these, I've counted with on hundreds with these before, and then the 10 sticks, and then the 1 sticks. And so, again, just trying to engage even your most reticent learner as you start class, what do you notice, what do you wonder? And then kind of going through, and eventually, this is more the algebra way we would think about it, like 3 times 10 squared plus 2 times 10 to the first power, and then plus 9 times 10 to the zero power, and then also like bringing that exponent. Anything to the zero power is 1, reminding them of that, and they can like clearly see that there in this as well. Expanded form versus, and then someone's finally like, oh, it looks all just 329. And then that really leads into, this would be what we'd warm up with. Thoughts, questions? And then. So this would lead into this leads into over to the polynomials. And so by looking at that screen before, pretty much anyone, most of my Algebra II students, almost everyone in my class, can see that this solution to this equation is x equals 10. Like they can see, oh, 10 times 10 times 10, that's 1,000. And then 10 times 10 is 100, so there's 600s. 4 times 10 is 40, and so by 1,640, this equation has a solution of x equals 10. And then we would, they would kind of get into the room, talk through that, and then we would, you know, go on in our lesson. Then it's a nice introduction to polynomials, that this looks really complicated to students, but just getting that concept of x squared, that's just, you know, x times x, that's a square. X cubed, x times x times x, that's a volume there. And then this is, this is 10 stick.
I feel like I understand.
So for like the group solving problem, problem solving part, I would say that the strength of the curriculum is really in problem solving. Like sometimes teachers are like, we need a little extra rope practice, or so people will pull things in too. But the strength of this is like the deep critical thinking. So like this is a lesson from second grade where they're starting to add two numbers together, and starting to have to like regroup or make an extra 10 or make an extra 100. So instead of having like a worksheet where they're saying, add these two numbers together and show us how you did it, there's, I think that the, I don't know how they set this up, but they're, they're placed around the room, and then the partner, they get two of the values together, and then are immediately asked, well, you need to compose a 10, or is there enough for an extra 10 or an extra 100? And then go through finding the sum, and almost everything we have does show your thinking or explain or show your thinking. And as we're looking at like differentiation too, that is one of going deeper with standards in elementary school, is whatever, all the best practice shows, that going deeper with standards instead of accelerating in elementary school is really what is best for all students again. And so this part of like showing your thinking is where we're like incorporating the rigor and incorporating that extension for kids who proving your thinking is difficult, and like a lot of people were able to do the algorithm, for example, growing up and didn't necessarily know why it works, or to like really prove it. So that's kind of like the deepness that goes with the curriculum. And this is second grade, the introduction to adding, so. And I like how you said with the practice piece. So there's not, like you said, like a ton and ton of practice with this curriculum, but that is really easy, that's what a lot of other curriculums have, where you can Google worksheets or whatever, like that practice piece is so out there. Here's 20 problems of blank, right? We've learned how to work with polynomials. I need 20 practice problems. Okay, sure. Because they're just really not, they still need some help with this. So that's easy to pull. As teachers, we're really good at that. But this curriculum just has that deeper, like the visualization, the, those activities to really make those connections. So that's. Oh, yeah, so this is a geometry problem. So here's a square city with three locations of the same store, E, F, and G, and it's a square city. The company wants to break the city down into regions so that whenever someone orders from an address, their order is sent to the store that's closest to their home. So we've talked about all different, what are different, if you were in a big city, what's something that could have three, you could have three Domino's, not peanut, so you could have three Walgreens, you could have three whatever. So the priority to decide how to partition the city between the two, with the three stores. And so I'd have these up, like just print out five or six of these hanging up along the room, and then students would go and they would, with their group, draw partitions. If there are 100 employees, how should they be distributed? So that might be just getting that little piece of dividing in there, and then is there anywhere in the city that has the same distance to all three stores? So if you're just looking, this ends up getting the idea of a perpendicular bisector. So if you section this off, most, most students, there could be other reasons, but section it like this, like this, and like this, and there's this point right here that's equidistant from all three points. And that's the, it is the circumcenter of the triangle, and it just kind of introduces that idea without all that vocabulary of perpendicular bisector, circumcenter, all that kind of stuff. It gets that piece just to, anyone can section that out and, and create that point that is the same distance from all three stores, and it's just a nice jumping off point to then after that building, all that vocabulary and construction and so. We also do a supplemental thing, so like a big part of my job is I'm going into the classrooms, and I've been calling it like a flumency block, where we're working on kind of the major standards of that grade level. And it's also sort of like a number sense block, which is a little bit more vague, but it's sort of, I bring in a lot of visuals, so if you're on the next slide, like for example, if we're working on addition, this is from like what I was doing with, did this with first graders a lot. But like it would start off with this slide, you're like, how many, or what do you notice, sometimes? Or how many slices have they getting super distracted? 10 slices. And then the next slide would be this, and the goal is, for example, if you're like, if you're doing 9 plus, let's see, I'm here on the 2, 4, 6, 9 plus 6, then like they're like, oh, if I just push one over here, it's a 9, it's a 10, and then it's 5 over here. So these visuals are ways for students to access like a higher level of content. And then we bring that to the more abstract through, and we usually like play games that have like some strategy components to them. But it's allowing, once again, all students access to the strategy, and bringing some like concrete nature to it, and the pizza one is always like, kind of, it's almost too distracting. But there's other ones that are regaining and not as distracting, it's like, they're all hungry. And then we go to the next slide, and then this is also an example of like how you would partition a or decompose like a multiplication equation, so it's, you can reinforce the idea that it's all equal groups. And then the slide before, I think probably has this quantity on it. And then they're like, well, if I know this is this much, then I just add on that group. And so then you can link it to the equations, and you're bringing some like understanding to make all of the work accessible to all students, and it's more efficient and more problem solving. Additionally, we use, we're gonna say something else? Oh, no. Okay, we also go for extension and for like foundational review too, at the, like I was saying before, go deeper with the standards. And then we're using Alex Math at the elementary school, starting in fourth grade, which is like an online curriculum where they're working through all the standards of that grade level. So occasionally, those that kids, they're usually working at their grade level standard, but working on stuff that they need to review, or that they've already been taught in class, but it's individualized, so it's another supplement we do. Yep, we also use Alex Math in the seventh through 11th grade as well. Again, just finally review that retention piece. And also they can, you know, feel like they're getting ahead if they finish off seventh grade math, they can work on eighth grade math, if they're finished up with Algebra I, they can work on Geometry or Algebra II, or you know, move on. And then we've really worked hard, especially coming out COVID with all the online learning, and all the other options. So acceleration without skipping classes. So in the elementary school, we go deeper with the standard. And then in seventh grade, you have the option of seventh and eighth grade math. In one year, actually. I think I'm in the slide. I think it's like, okay, so I'll go over that then. But I'm just, acceleration without skipping classes is a big thing. And also trying to keep kids as much as possible engaged with Washburn teachers versus going online and just doing online school, you know, that can be really successful for some students, but it's a pretty small amount, and we know that students get really, really distracted with technology, so I'm trying to keep kids, and provide options so they don't have to go online if they want to accelerate. We have lots of options there. This is what Alex Math looks like when they first get into it, it has their, how many topics they've already passed off, they've already mastered 141 topics. There's 120 to learn, there's 39 topics remaining, so it says over here. And then there's all these different slices, whole numbers, adding whole numbers, subtracting whole numbers, this is a I think this is like fourth or fifth grade. Fourth and fifth grade, multiplying whole numbers, so they've got like a lot of their arithmetic down, and then measuring and interpreting data, that tends to be, and then they like go back and rework on a measurement, fractions, anyway, so it just shows all the different ones they've mastered, and then they would click in to a topic, and it would give them, like, this is the next recommended thing to work on. So, yeah, they usually do that, at least in the middle school and high school, about 45 minutes a week. So it's about one class period. They can also use that time to like catch up on work and then do that at home if they want to, because it's a nice time to meet the teacher and be one of them. And then going to the next slide. So this is a pathway that we've developed, lots of different pathways. And this is just like the regular paths, if you want, you just take seventh grade math, eighth grade math, Algebra I, Geometry, and then your third year of high school, you have a lot of options. Advanced middle school track, they take seventh and eighth grade math in one year. So they take seventh grade during their regular block with Mr. Wilk, and then eighth grade math with me during their study hall time. So they don't have a study hall. And then they take Algebra I, Geometry, and then they have options their sophomore year. And then if they're like, that's a lot to not have a study hall, there are options later on to, you could double up your sophomore year. And that has worked really, really well. There's a lot of students that like, I'm just not quite mature enough for this yet, but that I really want, I really like math, I wanna do more things, or I see a need for it, because I have this specific career that I need to be cut out of something, and so they can do that. And then we have so many options, our senior year, our junior and senior year. Tech math is a Northwoods tech class with Mr. Erie. Business math is a Northwoods tech class with Ms. Norby Davis. Computer science is gonna be hopefully next year, UW Superior with me. Statistics is UW Superior with Ms. Norby Davis. Precalculus, Calculus I and Calculus II will also be UW Superior with me as well.
Don't you say it's UW Superior with you? Does that mean it's online with you? No, what does that mean with you?
It's in my classroom, taught as a college class, and they get UW Superior credit. So I'm, since I have a master's degree, I can teach UW Superior, like I have a program with UW Superior to teach. We're still working through that with curriculum councils, resting that in Shep, but Ms. Norby Davis already does that with statistics. So, yeah, so we do have, especially with Northland closing, just the need to have that option in high school so that they, they don't have to go to UW Superior or do an online option.
That's a great option. I didn't know that either.
Transcribed it for that. Yeah.
Is that it?
Yeah, there.
Okay. I have a question, I don't think I put you on the spot, but can you kind of like anecdotally say like how you feel math has changed in the district, or maybe how kids are engaging in the district over the past, like pre-curriculum, new curriculum? You know, like have you noticed changes, or can you speak to a change, or something you observed?
The first year was really rough because they were really uncomfortable. Like to stand up on a whiteboard, it was just like, if the teacher can see what I'm doing, everyone can see what I'm doing. Work, like working with groups kind of softened that a little bit, but so that was really hard the first year. I definitely, students just get up there and just go for it now, it's been kind of cool to see that. I also, so I taught third grade, this is my fourth year in the district, so I taught first, third grade the year that we weren't using Math. So people are pulling from GoMath or pulling from like other resources. And what I think, what I saw the shift happen afterwards was that there was more coherence across the grade levels. I think the rigor went up tremendously, because like if you're pulling things from multiple places, like I think I see teachers, they're like, ugh, do we really have to do this? You know, and they see like, like illustrative math goes pretty deep. And so like, if you're just pulling things, I think people would like naturally kind of shy away from it, like, not because they, I don't know, just because that's like easier, you know? And so I think the rigor went a lot deeper, but I just think there's consistency across the grade levels. And then the other thing that happens with this curriculum is that like in fifth grade, for example, there, we do volume, but then after that, it's like a huge amount of time spent on operations with different fractions and understanding that deeply. Like multiplying fractions, dividing fractions, and before illustrative math, like a lot of curriculums would work with whole numbers for like half of the year, three quarters of the year, and they kind of smushed this huge major part of standards into like the last quarter. And so I think the way that it's split felt really uncomfortable in the beginning, and I think that it's really helping them, and today, I was talking with Jim Marsh, and we were, he was like, I've never done math like this, you know? Like, yes, I know, and here we are, we're doing it. And, but also, like there was, we were both like fractions, and we had done all of the visual model of it, but there was so much review of whole number computation within it. But there was so much review of whole number computation within it. And so like, I think that the curriculum, the people who created the curriculum are very smart about creating opportunities for like review of fundamental concepts within these higher level grade level concepts.
It sounds like we're becoming a math town.
Well.
Whatever.
We have a lot of students that I think really like it too. And I think that we've seen kids really like take it on, you know? And I, I mean, like I said, it's only my fourth year, but I love seeing that when we can, like older students especially are like, okay, I'm gonna do it, you know?
I think a cool thing is, and many of you probably remember all of the school improvement committee meetings that we had, especially during and after COVID, we saw a drop in our test scores and a drop in our engagement. And this was part of that process. And we talked about all of these cycles, you know, the short little cycles and we saw some of these big cycles. This was a big cycle. This was a three-year cycle. We knew that we wouldn't really see a change in data within the first couple of years. We did actually, and now by year three, we can see that, that significant change more growth than the state average in math, which is pretty exciting. It's our highest proficiencies in math ever.
What I would be curious to know, and I don't know, and you probably can't tell me this, but having been a teacher for a long time and working with specialized kids, I mean, I can remember, I mean, I, as a student, I remember the math we had, which was memorizing everything. And, and then I can remember when they started getting into the, you know, well, how did you get that? And think about and explain how you did that. To me, that was an amazing thing to see how kids think so differently. I mean, you know, because I had my way of thinking and that was like, there was no way they can get the answer by what they're doing. And they could, because they did it differently. And what I'm wondering is, the kids that I was working with at that point had, are now probably parents. You know, so is there a difference between those people who are now parents and how they work with their kids in that whole different way of thinking about math as opposed to you memorize your multiplication tables and you, you know, you multiply, you memorize the formulas and I wonder if there's going to be a difference with, with parents thinking of it differently.
I haven't had any parents like at least complain that high schoolers don't talk to their parents as much sometimes. As a parent of a high schooler myself. So, but when it comes down to, like you still can do the other way, like a person recognized parent was like, oh, you're trying to undo the distributive property. And so they just looked up some videos and just, you know, undid. Went through that with it. And then that was great. Like I love it. It's just, it just adds one more piece to it. But I'm sure it really depends on the parent and their. Yeah. I mean, I think people recognize that it's different. I do think that that is something that I've like had on my to-do list of like how to increase our parent engagement and that. And I think at the elementary school, for example, like when we're looking at those pizza slices, like really figuring out a way to communicate like, oh, here are different strategies. And a lot of those strategies that we do, I think people have also done in their head when they're doing mental math, but it's just creating language around it. And then creating new kids who aren't all, are already doing that to also see it as a way of doing it. So I think that we hear it a little bit and we've been encouraging families to like play games and develop critical thinking and things like that, which I think is actually sometimes hard to do at school because it takes so much time. But like regularly playing games and understanding that there's like strategy with it. I think really helps develop critical thinking. And so that's sort of the approach we've taken so far. But I think there's still room for growth for sure.
Very interesting. Thanks for presenting tonight. That's.
Thanks for all your interest.
That was great. It just did a great job visualizing the law. I feel like if I learned number text in my, you know, four, five years, I was like, oh, I wish I would have had this. As like, I wish I would have thought about math that way or learned how to think about it. My whole experience has been so different. It's really powerful.
I mean, we had one way to do math. And it was the way the teacher told you to do it. This is how you do it. And you don't even know that way.
Totally different worlds.
It is different. And thank goodness. All right. Denise, you want to do the superintendent report?
Yeah. So the first thing to just review is the enrollment and attendance report. So we have a month, we have September's data and then we have October. So we were at five hundred and thirty-three students in September for Third Friday, and now we're at five thirty-seven. So we've added some students to the district. And of course, that's going to fluctuate all year. And then our attendance rate, very similar, it was ninety-two point eight and then ninety-two point five. So it's similar in the, and working on, you know, trying to navigate some of those high flyers. We do have a few and being a small district, that can really impact your rate. If you have one or two in a grade level. So we do have that on our radar and are working with families and strategies to promote engagement and have our students during school or as much as possible. We'll keep you up to date on that.
Do you have data back farther?
Like from years past?
Yeah. We just started like last year.
We could go back. I mean, I just started this. Yeah. Even being Skyward, it would just be a matter of digging for it and.
It would be difficult.
Or we could go up to Wise Dash and do a little bit of it, of like trend data.
I would love, like, I'm, I totally geeked out on this and wanted like more. I would love to see years worth of data and I would love to see, because I want to pick out trends.
I know it is.
Whether that's helpful for anything is the question. But I'm like, man, like, I see, this is not the case, but like, for example, I see, you know, this year's sophomore class is, got more attendance. Was last year's freshman class. Like, was it a class agreeing thing? Or do sophomores just generally, every year sophomores bug out more or?
And what's so tricky about that is then you do have this, this like transient, you have some transient students that kind of have been flowing. And so you might see a dip. One year it may be because someone moved in and maybe one is, I don't, yeah, that would be hard to probably like, you could certainly look at. It would be actually the data that's really interesting is pre-COVID.
Well, yeah.
Post-COVID, right?
Of course, that would be a great step to do.
Because if we did that, we'd be like celebrating because we should really, holy cow, we've really improved attendance with COVID.
We gotta celebrate them.
We'll get them. So, and, and actually right now, we're right at the date average. So we're, we're hanging tough with that, but but working in an area. And when you look at the school report cards, which in December, we'll spend a little bit of time reviewing with this group. You'll see how chronic absenteeism does impact our score, which is why it's one of the areas that we've been focusing on. So with that, I also want to share that, yes, the report cards have been released and how we're elementary and preschool met expectations, which is fabulous. So really good work. Digging deep into math, digging deep into literacy at both buildings. And so more good things to come. And the middle school this year exceeded expectations. So great to see improvements all the way around. And like I said, we'll bring more in December and share those details with the board. Super excited about the food pantry, food drive work that the district and the community is leading. There's so much food at the elementary school. It has taken over the, the workroom space and the collection here at the high school as well. So the offices have now performed together. So we can maybe hopefully identify and help support families and students. Whatever we have left over mid-December, when we're done, we're going to donate to the brick and ensure that it's utilized area-wise. So we really are excited about that. The Veterans Day Assembly went so well this week. I just have to give a shout out to Ina Grim, who organized that here in this building. And was the speaker. So he had tapped on, and he himself is a veteran, did a wonderful job and had tried to tap on some shoulders and ended up himself in the seat and handled it with such grace and humility. And it was really cool to hear his story of his experience in the, on his National Guard, I believe, and then deployed to Iraq. So had a, quite a story to share about that. And then last, the strategic planning process has wrapped up and tonight the board will have the opportunity to approve the work that that committee did. It was a really wonderful process facilitated, very well by Joe Trader, who, who is an outstanding administrator in this state. So great work and really a lot of fun to pull that, you know, variety diverse group of people together to work and collaborate. Just want to say thank you to all of them.
All right. Thank you. Just a reminder of our board goals. Next month, we have Angela Sproong coming to present to the board. And then in January, we have Romaine Quinn will be coming. Community engagement, we have done the strategic plan. Denise and I have just briefly started on talking about some community outreach. You know, possibly some, like a meeting at the coffee shop inviting community. Or, you know, something like that. And it would be nice if we could have some board members to participate in that too. So we'll get together and come up with some times and dates and maybe something in the evening too, so that we can have everybody participate. So a few of those, that sound okay?
This could be mine in the coffee shops, not open maybe.
We'll have to do something different then. But we'll work on that. The, the voucher transparency program. We ran into some issues with that. We do have to have permission from every municipality to be able to get that onto the tax bill. And knowing that and knowing how much time that's going to take since it is November. And tax bills come out pretty soon. There's also a little issue with the IT ability to be able to get that onto the tax bill at this point in time. So we're not going to get it this year. So we'll have to be continuing to work on that. I did talk with Chris Tambo Foyle about, you know, wording of, of the resolution. Some changes that we would probably want to make. And then we will start meeting with the municipalities and, and asking them to consider that. So we can get that done in advance and ready for next year. So we're working on that. So I think that's where we are with the goals. Of course, tonight we started on the bylaws and working on that. So we're doing well with, with our goals. Cesar, what's your report?
The October pack meeting was held at Superior Middle School. Cesar will be holding two pack meetings in districts this year, allowing districts to share things that happened in their buildings. There was an oral report by Olivia Datchell. She's the Youth and Partnership Program person. Program had a hundred and seventy-five students complete the program last year. That brought additional funding to participating districts. This year, there are a hundred and forty-one currently enrolled with a hundred and sixteen employers engaged in the Youth and Partnership Program. These numbers are typically seen later in the year. Some improvements to the communication process has helped the students get involved sooner. This is helping build the local workforce. Which that program has really taken off. She's done a great job.
That's it. Right. Thank you.
Let's move on to the financial reports and bills. Everything was arranged and in order and like looked really nice. And there was just like, when I was going through some of the things that jumped out at me that, at least for like this particular like athletic activity, you know, we know, and like the the show choir extravaganza is this Saturday. So if you're looking for some good family fun, you know, and I was just kind of thinking about all of the activities that we have. And it looked like the admissions that we received from a middle school girls' basketball was kind of like the same as the high school girls' volleyball. For this particular, you know, thing that I saw, I'm like, the same. Like, oh, that's really interesting. I wonder if we have an opportunity to engage more community members into our school activities for, like I said, some good family fun. Because the like level of competition as you get into high school, like the, like they're just like stronger, bigger and like you're excited and it's a fast, like you'd expect that there might be more admissions into a like high school game than there would be into a middle school game. And so, so that just like struck me. It's like, oh, opportunity. Hmm, wonder. So, so I just thought I'd bring it up because that's what I do. And because we have show choir extravaganza this Saturday.
Which is spectacular.
Which is spectacular. So.
Surrendered and creative as well.
Yeah, yeah. Can't wait. But anything, I do think I was just really great. And Janet, of course, is so organized with all of the videos that she lays up for. You want to get there. And it is always available for questions. So, you know, if you guys have any questions, but I will move to approve the financial statements.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. I, I'm wondering if we should have on the agenda a discussion of when we're going to do posting for Janet's position? Should, I mean, is that, do we want to do that as a discussion with the board or do you want to just, you have an idea?
Yeah. So timeline-ish, thinking maybe February posting, March interviews and then onboarding April, May, we're thinking some time with Janet would be really helpful, but yeah, we want to balance that with a realistic timeline because it's been districts where they've done some of that overlap and it can get very long and a little bit too much. So I've been talking to Janet about that and trying to figure out, are we better off? Like, what does that sweet spot look like? And then maybe we can tap into her as a kind of a consultant after her days. Plus we'll have a mentor for that individual and we have a couple of district contacts that I know Janet's already mentioned, who said, who she said are amazing. So, and we'll have Wacho and lots of resources, but I almost wonder if it's going to be one of those things like as you're doing the work, the questions pop up and then you want to, you know, call a friend. And Janet, could you be that friend for this person? And she said absolutely, she'd be more than happy to do that, you know, after she reaches her age that she.
Do we need to have more discussion on that or are you going to just?
I think when we're, I'll, I'll bring it to you the month before and just say the plan is we're going to post, this is the timeline, this is what it looks like.
In your, in your report.
Yep, this same with the middle school, high school principals, we're actually planning on June before that.
Sure.
So January, hire, February, Janet, February, hire, March. That's right now kind of the plan for the year.
Sounds good. All right. Consent agenda?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, let's go on to policy, the library media. Do you want to discuss that or talk for a little bit to Denise?
So in the, we did all the policies as a committee together, the ones that are in the second meeting and the first reading. And I recognize that the, the library policies, they're, they're housed in different places in the board docs area. And it was missed. So it was the policy we had done together as a committee. It's the first reading only because I missed it last month.
So we need a motion for the first reading of the library media?
We can motion to approve the first reading of policy twenty-five, twenty-two, library media centers.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And then the second reading of a number of other policies that we had on there last time for the first reading. Need a motion?
I need a motion for the second reading of those policies.
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Um strategic plan, which I have to say I enjoyed thoroughly. It was very interesting.
Cody's going to bring up the docs for us to kind of walk through um together. So we'll go through, there's three documents that were created as a result of the strategic planning work. So the first doc walks us through the our new mission and vision, which we brought to the board last month and discussed. So our new mission, connecting to educate, inspire, and empower, and our vision of a place of excellence that honors the whole learner. And then we were able to finalize in the last session our commitments. And I won't read through the definition, you know, or description, but relationships, communication, safety, continuous improvement, accountability, freedom of healthy, and celebration. And these were commitments that, these are commitments that we as a staff uphold and then will be used for onboarding your staff and working to resolve any, you know, issues that we may face um if someone is not fulfilling our commitments. And so we'll have those to share out um as we start the twenty-six, twenty-seventh school year. I think some of this will sneak its way into, you know, some of our documents and some of the work that we do put in office, we'll roll out next year. Uh the second document walks through the four pillars. And so the the team, uh it's just amazing how everybody worked so collaboratively together to come up with um the pillars and the goals. So the four pillars are student of the actual plan, student engagement and learning, family and community partnerships, staff support and development, and then resources, finances, and operations. So the visual down at the bottom shows sort of what is called the strategic architecture. And that has those four pillars and then those titles in red with the foundation of our mission and our vision on the bottom. Those are built upon those. And then the the team developed four, they developed five-year strategic objectives aligned to the four pillars. And so the last sheet that Cody's going to pull up will walk us through those. Can you make it just a little? So under student engagement and learning, um we have two five-year objectives. The first is to increase student achievement and ensure high levels of learning overall, preparing students for successful post-secondary pursuits within a global community. And the second goal is to foster a culture of student engagement and wellbeing through diverse learning opportunities. The second pillar, family and community partnerships, has one uh five-year strategic goal, to intentionally connect schools, families, and community partners through effective communication to expand access to resources that support student learning, wellbeing, and success. Third pillar, staff support and development, has one five-year strategic goal, enhance recruitment and retention by offering competitive compensation, benefits, and intentional professional development, ensuring all staff feel valued and supported. And then that last pillar, resources, finances, and operations, has again one um five-year uh objective, and it's achieve long-term fiscal and facilities sustainability and maximize resource distribution, demonstrating the district's mission and vision. So there's overall five objectives. Sometimes I want to interchange it with goals, but I was cautioned, objectives are different than goals. So these are large objectives. And then within these, each year, we will develop specific goals um as a district. And of course, the building level will do the same, and then we'll work to achieve those goals um aligned to our objectives. Is that any sense? It's really exciting. Great, amazing work. And it it really also falls in line with the work that had been happening, especially those two pillars. The staff support and development and resources and combination operations were happening. But we didn't really, you know, we didn't have a structure for those things or true objectives. Um family and community partnerships, in some ways, again, one that was happening, but um not as as specific. And of course, we're all here for student engagement and learning, so that's one that's, you know, always a focus and and the the pillar that's mostly, you know, already in. So that one's a little easier to align to for work. But excited to uh work, we're going to work with Joe. Ivy and Shandra and I are going to meet with him this spring and develop a, you know, what those goals may look like and work towards um some frameworks that he had provided. So we are going to have him assist us with that initial work and then we'll bring that to to you all and and the community and get feedback and share out moving forward, like a timeline for how that will happen. It's just really exciting.
I I did notice that in the um convention in January, there was one that was um how to move from a strategic plan to a strategic action or something like that. So I did sign up for that one.
There's some good ones.
Any other questions, thoughts on the strategic plan? Then we need a motion to.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-six uh twenty-thirty-one strategic plan.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approve twenty-six, twenty-seven school district calendar.
I move to approve the twenty-eight, twenty-six, twenty-seven school district calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-thirty-one district copier lease.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I move to approve early graduation application.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. School delegate and alternative. I think these two right here should be the delegates and the alternative.
Uh sure, um and it just uh I can be delegate because I did last four years. Right. And uh we need to add on to the December agenda, which is literally next month. Uh the, just the review of the resolutions, so um just so I can make sure that uh I represent our community well. We have a short discussion, a little bit, I can present.
Okay.
The resolutions.
Are you okay with being the alternative?
I'm okay with being the alternative.
Perfect. We need a motion to designate these two people to be.
We make a motion to designate Tina Step as the delegate. With the W A speed.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Yay. All right, we're going to go through the monthly reflection. Was the meeting run efficiently but effectively? Did you feel? Everyone was given the opportunity to express their ideas and concerns? Everybody felt like they had that opportunity? Okay. Decisions were discussed in a manner that was like was clear and transparent to the community?
Oh, going back to item one, I was, I'm sorry to bust through, but um just making sure that like all of the links and um and it sounds like she got that iron out. But I think that we just have to like, just make that note that like, oh, yeah, sometimes our agenda links don't work for the community and just making sure that like all of the public agreements are available in a timely manner for the community.
And Ivy, I need to get, you had great wording for that, and I don't remember what it was. But you're going to have to think about that again. Okay, so we're back to the.
Sorry.
Decisions were discussed in a manner that was clear and transparent to the community?
Yes.
Um decisions were consistent and fair. This is the one that you had the good good words for. Because we talked about staff and students, but you had all stakeholders or all something?
Yeah, I wrote it on my iPad side, but I can find it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Decisions were consistent and fair?
Yes.
Decisions reflected the mission of the district? Um any suggestions for future agenda items?
Checking with Billy.
Um the discussion about the delegates, but also um I wonder if we can't do um, if you could like uh, it keeps coming up and I know it's going to fall into like our strategic plan or whatnot, but just a fostering connections with students and making sure that students have connections um in the building to like teachers and that they're feeling, like we heard from the math teachers today that they're like, students are getting more engaged. But I'm just hoping that all students can feel engagement and support from the teachers that they feel like they belong in our district. And um and I want that to be included um, I don't know, it just, it came up this month. Um and so I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of like uh of some of our students' needs and making sure that everybody has a personal.
Sure. Building relations, positive relationships amongst students, staff, families, and community where all are seen, heard, and valued.
Yep.
That's part of our commitment.
Yeah. And I don't, and I don't know like what that means. It doesn't have to be next month. But like, I don't know what kind of discussion we would even have or what kind of metric the like district could even like give to us. I don't want to um.
Well, there is, you know, the the youth risk behavior survey, that is usually in the spring, isn't it? And that's, that's usually actually one of the questions on there is.
Yeah, there's lots of like, do you think that's.
Yeah.
And the wellness committee has this other agenda item, so I can check that report out to the January.
Oh, great, perfect.
Um and at some point in time, I know we talked about one other time, is to have um just kind of a review of the safety plan.
So we are in the process of major leaving thing.
Yes.
So we have a core safety team that's new this year alongside our Alice protocols and all of that work. So if we could just hold off a bit on.
Okay.
You know, sharing what we currently have because we want to make some updates to that. And I feel like it's going to take us a bit of time. I mean, we could share with you what we have. If the board would just want to see what's currently, like what the plan looks like and what's all involved, but there's a lot of outdated.
Sure.
I should say a lot.
Could you give?
But there's some outdated components that Ivy and I talked about more like, how do we take that out or, you know, that.
Could you just kind of give us a review of what you're doing right now? How you're, how the, some of the things that you're, what you're working on?
Yeah.
Anything else for future agenda items? All right, and I need a motion to adjourn. I'll move to adjourn. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming.
Ivy, I have a question for you.